Order, hold, order. Ready, bro, sit your face, freeze it, halt.
Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of this land. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, halt, about nice, order, halt.
Please sit. Thank you again, the best role behind the door of the city. Before we get to our board's votes, we want to recognize the campaign party who is our interim county manager. Took over the role yesterday, and I wish she may be to address the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Education members. I can't tell you what an honor it is to stand here and represent Brunswick County. It is truly a privilege to be back before you, where I served for so many years as a school finance officer. It's near here in my heart to see all of you, as well as meeting the audience that I know have worked so hard for the school system for so many years. I appreciate the fact that I got my start with Brunswick County Schools. And please call me if there's anything at all that we can do. I'm so proud of you, Rick, that we've had for almost 20 years, and we look forward to many more years of working together.
Thank you, thank you so much. Does anybody have any comments? Sure, I know you have something to say.
I don't even have anything. Ann and I worked together for a long time, and I believe I've never seen anybody any more well qualified than she is. So congratulations, I think you deserve it.
Thank you, Sam, I very appreciate that.
And Mr. Chairman, I shared with you in the brief, Ms. Harden, you were interim superintendent a long time. You recall this?
Yes, sir, very briefly.
Yes, ma'am.
Then my secretary's intended, hang on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We run along to our board salute, I approve. Board member that's joining in the way, please. Savannah Michelle, please come forward. Savannah is a student at South Brunswick High School, and she has been accepted to the highly prestigious North Carolina School of Science and Math, the first public residential high school established for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. According to Savannah's teachers, she is a dedicated student who shows a strong passion and aptitude for science, math, and leadership. She is actively involved in the 4A Club and serves as a counselor for summer programs. She is also a member of the South Brunswick High School swim and tennis teams. Everyone agrees that she is well respected by her peers, as well as her teachers. Savannah has followed in the footsteps of previous Cougars to attend the North Carolina School of Science and Math, and she will certainly represent the SciFi family and Brunswick County Schools with pride as she prepares for her future. Savannah, congratulations for that signal, hon. Mister Michelle, who is our father, he used to be our personnel, Rachel Redd.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
I would say it was genetic, but all of you know me. The wonderful teachers, the wonderful teachers of both.
Is Caitlin Auger present this evening? Please come forward. Congratulations to South Brunswick High School junior Caitlin Auger for her creative artwork, selected by the North Carolina Art Education Association to represent North Carolina at the Washington DC exhibit at the Lyndon Thane Johnson Building of the Department of Education. Her artwork will be exhibited during the months of June and July 2013. A ceremony honoring students whose artwork was selected nationally will be held on June 21st with distinguished speakers and national guests in attendance. Caitlin's winning artwork entry was her two-dimensional sea-like linoleum print. Her South Brunswick High School visual art teacher is Patricia Lyles, who has encouraged and motivated many talented visual arts students to have their exemplary work showcased. Caitlin, we're proud that your artwork represents us in Washington DC at the US Department of Education. Congratulations. Do you have your parents? Please stand up. And I say the principal of South Brunswick High School, Mr. Price, is here along with his award-winning students. Thank you for coming this evening. Your guys, please stand as well. Thank you. Would Becky Lindsey, please come forward. South Brunswick High School career and technical education teacher Becky Lindsey has been selected as a 2013-14 Keenan Fellow. Ms. Lindsey is the first Keenan Fellow named from Brunswick County, competed against 230 highly qualified candidates, and will join an elite group of 48 educators selected from systems throughout North Carolina. The Keenan Fellows Program is an initiative of the Keenan Institute for Engineering, Technology, and Science at North Carolina State University. During the summer, Ms. Lindsey will work on a research project with her mentor, Dan Waltney of North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. The project entitled Leading Educators to Home Base will allow Ms. Lindsey to explore innovative ways of preparing students for college and careers. From their research, fellows will develop lesson plans and resources to be shared with other educators at the regional, state, and national levels. According to Susan Perry, acting director of the Keenan Fellows Program, through this in-depth experience which includes accomplished peers from across the state, hands-on research, and 10 days of professional development, we expect fellows to become leaders and serve as ambassadors for excellence in education in North Carolina. Becky Lindsey, Keenan Fellow, congratulations. Nick Westfall, would you please come forward. Encouraging children to lead healthy, active lifestyles is Nick Westfall's passion. He is a physical education teacher at Virginia Williamson Elementary and is the driving force behind the research 5K races that take place at least twice a year under the Holden Beach Bridge. These races bring families from all over Brunswick County to run, walk, and support the movement. For his efforts, Westfall has been named a Subway School Health Champion. The Department of Public Instruction is pleased to partner with Tarheel Sports Properties and Subway to sponsor this project. Nick will be recognized with a plaque prior to the first pitch of the University of North Carolina-Virginia baseball game on Friday, May 17th. In addition, he will receive $500 to support the intensity and soul Sisters Running Clubs, programs he established at Virginia Williamson. Students and staff at his school will also receive buy one get one free Subway coupons. Nick is now in the running for Subway School Health Champion of the Year and $5,000 to support a health-related project. That announcement will be made in December. Congratulations, Nick Westfall, Health Champion. Nick, you have some things to give to the...
My hands.
Please, thank. And Mr. Mike Sapp, would you please come forward. The Board of Education and especially the Fine Arts Department of Brunswick County Schools wish to honor Mr. Mike Sapp, the director of the Odell Williamson Auditorium at Brunswick Community College, for the following ways he has promoted the cultural arts in Brunswick County: the positive commitment he has made and continually displays towards cultural arts in Brunswick County; his theatrical expertise by perpetuating a professional atmosphere at all productions featured at Odell Williamson Auditorium, whether they are from professional performers and companies from around the world or from local fine arts groups from our schools or community; his tireless focus on making the Odell Williamson Auditorium a grand setting for showcasing student and adult talent since its opening in 1993; his collaboration with all 19 of Brunswick County Schools and its countywide Fine Arts Department to produce the best shows possible, whether they highlight choral or instrumental music, theater, dance, or a visual art exhibit; his serving as a judge for fine arts events such as the 2013 High School One Act Play Festival; his support of summer students' fine arts camps showcasing drama, dance, and chorus with the Brunswick County School System and Brunswick Arts Council; his teaching of technical elements and tools such as those with sound engineering and lighting to groups of students and adults for general knowledge or continuing education units; his promotion of the Coffee House mini-productions showcasing student talent in the event center; his commitment to staging excellent high school graduation ceremonies on behalf of the students of Brunswick County Schools; his support and appreciation of arts integration in our schools; his longstanding love for and dedication of the creative part of each individual; and his ability to expand cultural arts opportunities to enrich the lives of all Brunswick County citizens, young and old alike. For these aforementioned reasons and more, we salute Mr. Mike Sapp for being a trusted friend to the citizens of Brunswick County and especially the arts in Brunswick County Schools as he continues to model such important qualities as professionalism, commitment, respect, hard work, high ethical standards, and craft excellence in making sure that no matter what else, the show must go on. Mike Sapp. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Odell Williamson Auditorium. I think we have a lot of friends with Mike Sapp here this evening. Want y'all to stand, and we can see you, uh, two names for you. Mike Conne Ines wrote that, and I'm gonna give it to you so they can reread it at your funeral. Next is Ms. Hills. Hank Hunter.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. First of all, thank you for your recognition for Teacher Assistant of the Year. I want to appreciate and I'm very grateful for the honor of representing Brunswick County as Teacher Assistant of the Year. I have the privilege of going to the National North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants this weekend, and I want you to know that I've come back pumped, ready, to rock and roll the last twenty days of this school year. I learned so much in the conference, and every time I go, it's, uh, waiting for me. There's so many workshops that you can use and utilize in the classroom. And when I came back on Monday, because my teacher was doing the in-class testing, I had the opportunity to just teach and learn, use some of the things that I learned over the weekend. And it was very successful. Even though I do some of the technology classes here that we give in the workshop, there's nothing like at the conference, whenever you see different people and different people from other areas of the county. And I would tell Ms. Owens, I said, even though we have a lot of things that we think are short, we're still in Black County. We're still Black County. After talking to a lot of people, I found out that we're still in Black County. And I wish that a lot of you would go to the banquet for some of the workshop evenings just on the Saturday. I had the privilege of being a presenter with Ms. Margaret Gannfield on the PPIS workshop one year, and it was very good. Every year I try to leave something with my students to make my year worthwhile. I want to make an impact on somebody that when they look back, they can say, that lady helped me. Well, this year, it reversed. Instead of me making an impact on someone else's life, this young lady right here has made an impact on my life. Lovely type of person that let no obstacle be an obstacle. Her obstacle is her strength. I've seen her come into this device at the beginning of the year, using it to talk to them. Maybe by November, she put it in a cup and she wouldn't take it out. She'd get on the carpet, she was saying, she did just what everybody else did. Lovely does not want to use her device anymore because she sees herself as just like you and me. There's no limit to what she can do. She's very vocal, she reads, she writes, she's ready for first writing. She, um... She lets none of her physical hand, none of her physical shortfalls stop her. Her mom told me not to let her get on the jungle gym. So I said, lovely, no you can't. Mom says no. Well, she waited till I was distracted by someone else waiting around. And when I turned and looked, Lovely was at the top of the jungle gym. So when I got her off, she looked at me like, oh, God, I'm in trouble. And so she came to me, I said, Mom said we can't do it. That's the first time I've ever seen Lovely cry. Because she wanted me to let her get back up there. But secretly, we mastered that habit with Lovely. Lovely, uh... I've learned that what you see is not always what you get. There are no limits to what children can do. Obstacles are only obstacles if we allow them to be obstacles. I've watched her and I watch people watch me interact with her, and it's like they're wondering, well, what are we gonna do with her? What, what can, you know, but Lovely brightens up my day. Lovely brightens up Olivia, don't you? She, she will make your day just a ray of sunshine. She's not afraid of strangers, and there's nothing too hard for Lovely. So, I, I'm just really thrilled that and honored that I am a professional educator of Brunswick County Schools, and I've been impacted by her life, and she's been impacted by my life, and that I was allowed to teach her as she taught it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Villa. Okay, presentations, teacher's voice, Ms. Hunter.
In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I've prepared this with your symptoms. All right, so this week, instead of me making a teacher's voice conversation to the board directly, I wanted to say hello to the Board of Education and all the teachers and all the employees from Brunswick County Schools from my home. Because all this year, I have talked about teachers and teacher voice and the vantage point of an employee. Really, truly, one of the other really important ways that I am part of the Brunswick County Schools family is that I'm a parent. And my husband and I, Mike, we have three beautiful children, two of which actually are part of the Brunswick County Schools family. This is Elijah, say hello, Elijah.
Hello.
Yeah, I'm screw you, buddy. Elijah, where do you go to school?
Southport Elementary.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Bomer.
And tell me something about Ms. Bomer.
She's a really nice person.
Really?
Yes.
All right, so Elijah is in kindergarten at elementary school at Southport Elementary, and this is Leo.
Hello, Leo.
And this is Matt. And Leo is actually another part of the Brunswick County Schools family. Leo, um, was born with a cleft lip and palate, and because of that, he has had a lot of things that he's had to do, right, Leo?
Yeah.
Yeah. And one of the things that he gets from Brunswick County Schools is speech therapy services, thankfully, through Southport Elementary, which he started in February. And so he, even though he doesn't go to school yet, gets services from Brunswick County Schools, and we are so grateful that, uh, that he does. So we are a part of the Brunswick County Schools family, not just as a slave, not just as a family that lives in Brunswick County, but as students of Brunswick County Schools. And we wanted to say thank you to everybody from the Board of Education, to the staff at Central Office, to all of the employees at all of the schools, including the schools that we go to, Southport Elementary, who help to make the education of our children possible. So, thank you, teachers, thank you, staff, thank you, Brunswick County Schools for taking care of our family.
Say thank you, everybody.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, goodbye.
Now, do you have any energy? And I'll... Right. Okay, Ms. Villa, do you have a month review?
I think it's more unfortunate for me every week. Well, it has been an exciting spring in Brunswick County Schools. We have had a tremendous activity, a month of activities in our school system. And I wanted to highlight the videos where we did not have too many of them to share with you. But before we get into the videos, I'd like to acknowledge that his teacher and employee Appreciation Week, and we do appreciate everything that our employees do to help us. And we posted a little thank you today on Facebook, and of course, it is getting lots of negative positive response from our community. This month, we had early college high school students who are participating in the Teen CERT program with partnership through the Emergency Management System. This is a video, if you have time to work, you can watch it. If not, you can read the great article that was done. It's a tremendous program, third year running, and students who are in the fifth grade and up at early college high schools can actually be trained and certified as a responder. And so it's an emergency simulation that they do every year, and it's been a great program and partnership. We had, for the very first time last Saturday, the inaugural Science Olympiad Elementary version here at Cedar Grove Middle School. We had 151 students participate. Their families were there, and we want to congratulate all of the participants and say congratulations to the varsity leaders, Olivia Elementary School. And there's a great photo album that was taken by lots of employees, and we would like the people to enjoy those photographs and celebrate with their own folks. As you are aware, this is the General Assembly season, and so there are lots of deals that catch the eyes of local media. And one of those is the Senate deal which is proposing to remove the class size cap and to eliminate instructional assistants from our classrooms. And I wanted to share this particular video with you today because our superintendent, Ed Rude, naturally was contacted and agreed to speak with the media about this particular legislation.
Bill Carone, Chevrolet GMC Buick is undergoing a new baseline to better serve you. Don't miss our Clear the Destiny. We're giving you the best savings on the all-new, exciting lineup, including the fuel-efficient Vod and Sporting Chevy Equinox, the rugged, durable GMC Sierra, and luxurious Buick LeBrons. And Bill Carone, we are serious about service. Purchase a new Ford United Vehicle in three years and complimentary oil changes. Clear the Destiny, going on now. Bill Carone, Chevrolet GMC Buick Highway 117, in all its five new roads.
The bill of the General Assembly could make things even tougher on classroom teachers, and that could mean an impact on your child's education. WWAY's Holdup Her Wiki has the story.
At the elementary level, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, really, an ideal class size for that age child is about fifteen per te... uh, really, an ideal class size for that age child is about fifteen per teacher. But when you get into the mid and upper twenties in the primary grades, uh, that, that's very difficult.
North Carolina currently limits the number of students in the classroom to twenty-four for kindergarten through third grade. Senate Bill 374, also known as the North Carolina Public School Budget Flexibility Act, would eliminate that cap.
I think some school systems that are pressed for resources might indeed swell the ranks of their primary classes. And instead of having twenty-four or fewer, have K through three classes with twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, it will make that kind of personalized instruction, individualized instruction, more difficult.
If signed into law, Senate Bill 374 would not only eliminate limits on class sizes, but also cut up to four thousand teaching positions statewide.
Teacher assistants are critical. Uh, sometimes it's difficult to tell when you visit a room, which one is the teacher and which one is the TA. When you keep the level of teachers flat, but you pull out three or four thousand teacher assistants statewide, that's a tremendous impact. And in Brunswick County, we would lose sixty-one teacher assistant positions.
In Brunswick County, Holden Kurwick, WWAY News Channel Three.
Well, under current law, the state of North Carolina only pays, that is, for one teacher per every eighteen students. Senate Bill 374 is currently in committee.
How about a type of...
WWAY News Channel Three offers you the best in high density.
Right, a couple of other things of interest for you to also, um, have knowledge about is we had Project Fitness, uh, which is basically an elementary school track meet. It started out as a high school, middle school, um, activity, but over the years, when middle school, high school track actually came into our system, um, elementary actually remained. So Project Fitness was held, great turnout from our students and our parents, another great photo album for you to review there as well. We also have a young man that you'll meet next month, who is the national jump star at the Rar Jump Rope, um, he is their gardener and his t-shirt will be on every jump rope from our t-shirt. Over six hundred thousand t-shirts will bear his artwork and you'll get a chance to meet him next month. We have amazing students and they will feature for O.L. football contests, of course, you met us in the show earlier today, as well as changing of the guard at some of our J.R.T.C. programs. And Brunswick County Schools was also represented at Safety Day, which was put on by the Castle Beach, um, Oak Island area. And we were there to talk about the initiatives that we have in our school system that help keep our students safe as well. And most, um, of most interest, uh, this month on our Facebook page, receiving thousands of views was the Special Olympics, um, opportunity that we had for our athletes. Uh, it turned out that we had a little rain shower, but it didn't dampen the spirit of the athletes and that photo album received over three thousand views on our Facebook page. So, we're very excited for the athletes and for the teachers who have tremendous dedication and support their programs. And speaking of that, again, employee appreciation, um, week. And we want to end tonight's media month interview without approving this monthly message to our employees, thanking them for the work that they do.
Good morning. We're at Olivia Elementary School. Beautiful Bolivia. As you can see, the grounds are just immaculate and kept. Here in the beautiful springtime, they just welcome all the kids, the teachers and parents that come to the school. I'm standing here with Ms. Tina Williams, who is, um, the custodian of the building. You know, custodians are the people that have custody, they're very important. They have custody of the building, they take care of it and prepare it for the students and teachers and parents every day. Ms. Williams, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and your colleagues. You represent all of our Brunswick County Schools that do such a wonderful job and emphasis with the inside and the outside of our schools. They are some of the finest in North Carolina. Makes a difference for children, we appreciate it so much. Good morning, Ms. Ivy. Always a pleasure. So when you come into Olivia Elementary School, you're greeted by Ms. Alicia Ivy, who is a very warm and welcoming person. And whoever comes in the door, parent, board member, student, staff member, I guess a warm greeting from Ms. Ivy and I guess there is all the best start possible. We appreciate what you do. And I thank you on behalf of the board and also you representing all of the receptionists and clerical support persons across the system, uh, who do this at every school. Basically, huge difference for children.
It's all.
Thank you. And, uh, I'm sitting with Lauren Harrigan, the Bolivia Teacher of the Year, and Helen Smith, the Teacher Assistant of the Year for all of Brunswick County. And, uh, we're asking you all to represent your colleagues across the system as we try to say thank you to all of our employees at this time of year. Uh, Lauren, you're the Teacher of the Year for Bolivia Elementary School. So you have been selected by your peers for your excellent work and thank you. Can you say a little bit about, uh, the support that teachers give to the TAs?
I believe it's crucial to have our teacher assistants in the classroom to make that happen, the growth of students and to ensure.
And Ms. Smith, um, I understand that you're actually working on your teaching license and are pretty close to achieving that. But how is it to work and support teachers and work with students and everything?
It's a balance to still in your development that the teacher and assistant people as a team are very important.
Well, both of you have been recognized by your peers for excellence and we appreciate what you do every day for children. And, uh, we've had the time at Olivia Elementary this morning, uh, lifting up our custodians and our receptionists, our teachers and our TAs, all, um, working together to provide our students and staff and the community with the finest education we can provide for our children. This is the time of year when we recognize, uh, our employees. We single out some as Teacher of the Year and TA of the Year, uh, but they're all hardworking and excellent and provide a year of growth at least for all the children in Brunswick County Schools. Again, thank you, Lauren.
And this is a final note. Um, all Brunswick County Schools Teachers of the Year for 2013-14 will be named Monday during. It is a countywide announcement. So the schools have been working very hard in naming and working to get this, I thought, out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay, um, approval of the meeting agenda? That's okay. Mr. Thompson?
Under, under the action items, so item number one, meal price increase.
Yes, sir.
Uh, following, uh, the operations committee meeting recently, uh, where just a few days after, in which this was discussed and, um, agreed upon to, to follow, we've been able to act. The nutrition staff got a letter from the Department of Agriculture, USDA, and we are able this year to defer to license approvals. So I'd like to remove those.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
I, I'm at the project, can we do that? Do you wish to make a motion?
I'd say...
I would be tempted to approve the initial...
No, that's just to remove that item.
Yeah.
Remove it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, I have a motion with the amendment.
Just, just a question. I didn't know that, Mr. Thompson, that, that that means we can have an increase in twenty cents next year? You, you know, that we had to, if we skip one year, fill up double then, that's what I heard.
Well, we did that in one year, but, uh, I, I don't believe there's anyone in the association that's with us to approve.
Please, uh, we, we, we're actually applying to the Department of the Way. So that's, it's not, we've done here, but, um, we're in the process of, of, we can do that, that's really, uh, request. Um, and it does, it, it was, we were being invented for this one year. We're not, uh, going to be able to, uh, double on cost.
I was under the impression if we skip the year, we have to...
Well, and, and that was the case during the course of the operations. It is, it was only afterwards that the latitude to staff and they lacked it on it, not in proper fashion to defer any kind of pricing for our parents and students.
So our prices will not fill up the initial type in the school.
Have a motion in second, on this basis, on the favor.
Aye.
On the vote. Okay. Next approval of the minutes. April ninth, April twenty-third operation, April twenty-third break on the finance.
Chairman, I have a motion that we're quick to minutes for April ninth, twenty-third operations and twenty-third the quicker connects and court session.
Have a motion, Mr. Thompson, we have a second. Take it on as good, on the favor. The sin items for approval, we have a motion for the sin. Prove the sin items. Motion, Mr. Thompson, we have a second. Second, Mr. Smith, in discussion, on the favor. Aye. Okay. Uh, action items, early college, high school, 2013. Can I make a statement, 2014 school, not twenty-one and four?
We're just holding, pretty fair.
Yes, sir, and, 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 and...
If we just had a slight, we already approved the calendar at the March meeting, but we are having to make a slight change because the community college approved their calendar and our spring break was one week off. So we needed to move the spring break to match up with the community college's spring break, which adjusted just a couple other days, the last day of the nine weeks and when there was a workday in, in the calendar. So we're just asking that you reapprove the calendar with those few changes based on the, to match up with the community college calendar.
We have a motion to approve. Senator, I'd like to propose to approve the early college high school school calendar minutes. Motion, Mr. Thompson, we have a second. Ms. Cook, second, on the favor.
Aye.
Okay. Now to the consideration of school start times for 2013, 2014. I think that's approved, you probably figured that out, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And board members, uh, members of the community. Uh, the board recently saw fit to, uh, return our system to a staggered bell schedule uh, to save, uh, between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars a year, every year into the future. Uh, those funds will be used for important purposes, including, um, paying for our elementary SROs and, uh, there will be funds for other expenses as well. And, uh, the board decided to leave it to the community for input as to whether elementary or secondary schools were open first under the schedule. Um, two years ago, we did a survey by way of Connect Ed and we reached, uh, just under three thousand families responded, about twenty-nine hundred plus. And so this year, uh, hoping to get a larger, um, comment from the community, we actually mailed a postcard to every household, uh, Brunswick County Schools or an employee of the school system uh, in the hopes that, uh, everyone who has taken the decision would be able to participate. So in, uh, at this time, I'd like to share with you the results of that survey. And, uh, the total number of parents surveyed and mailed was seven thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. The total number of responses was two thousand two hundred and ninety-eight, which is a thirty percent response rate. Forty percent of those who responded had children in elementary schools. Thirty-seven percent had children in secondary schools. And twenty-three had a child in both elementary and secondary level. Then we sent, uh, to staff, one thousand nine hundred and seventeen surveys and thirteen hundred and seventy-six were returned for a response rate of seventy-two percent. So the overall results, combining elementary and secondary, of the parents, forty-six percent wanted elementary schools to be in first and, uh, parents, fifty-four percent wanted secondary schools to open first each day. And as you can see, the staff response was very similar, only one point off. Forty-seven percent preferred elementary and fifty-three secondary. It was useful to disaggregate that, uh, response a little bit. Sixty-nine percent of parents who had, uh, children in elementary school, seven hundred and ninety responded. Sixty-nine percent of those wanted the elementary schools open first and thirty-one percent wanted secondary to open first. Then, the parents who had kids in secondary school, seven hundred and thirty-eight respondents. Only twenty-two percent wanted elementary to open first and seventy-eight percent wanted secondary to start first. And then we found four hundred and sixty-nine respondents that had children in both elementary and secondary. And of those persons, forty-one percent favored the elementary start first and fifty-nine percent, uh, secondary. The interesting thing about this board members, it, it just appears that everybody wants to go first. So, uh, with those numbers, uh, we ask the board, uh, for your advice. Our transportation folks are eagerly awaiting your decisions because, uh, it's come time they need to start planning for next year.
You know, I've heard every, when we did it last time, the point that I personally heard the most of was small children waiting at the rest stops. Um, no older receiving home in the afternoon to keep the small children. Sports interrupting and taking older kids out of class more, after-school jobs. So, anybody else say anything? I don't, Mr. Thompson, you have?
Well, I, my, my only, I mean, I guess, um, is it, and maybe I'm really asking, um, you to give us some advice on this one, but it's the issue of daycare. Uh, the younger parents of children in elementary school are generally, uh, the gentlemen of the world. It strikes me that daycare is probably their, one of their primary concerns outside of, of the education. That, that seems to be, to me, the, uh, the key way to... How do, how do the old members view that?
I find it very important and, and there's a, a parent that I can get. And, Mr. Hart, you mentioned this, do we provide or does C.I.S. provide after-school care at supply?
At this time, we do not.
Is there plans for next year, is it?
Uh, we, we're considering it, but we would need to, um, we're really waiting to find out what direction to go. Uh, we have applied for a grant with the Department of Public Instruction and if that is awarded to us, then, uh, that would provide eighty spots for students to, um, be served in an after-school type of setting.
That's why.
And, but there's a little more to that. And that is, um, depending on your decision, uh, if that grant is awarded to us, there would need to be some changes made to that grant and then that would have to go back to the Department of Public Instruction for approval. And if approved, then it would have to be awarded.
Yes, ma'am.
What would the difference be between how will the start times make a difference in the after-child, after-school care?
Um, under that situation...
Would you, could you have a...
I'm just wondering if there's still care provided, what would the difference in the time allotment make?
Again, if that grant is awarded, there needs to be a certain number of hours whereby those students are served. And at this point, the way the grant is written, those hours would be during the after-school hours from three until six, four days a week. Um, in order to, if you change it where the students, um, arrive later and get out of school later, then we have to look at reshifting the whole schedule, the budget and everything. Um, so if the schedule remains as it is today and it is awarded, then we have... Um, so if the schedule remains as it is today and it is awarded, then we have, we have an after-school program. So, um, not to say that we can't move forward and find ways to, um, make it happen, if you, depending on which way you shift your decision. If things remain exactly as they are now, it's moving forward for us. If, um, if there is a change and, um, and the elementary students go later, then we've got to really go back to the drawing table and come up with a plan.
Are you, are you saying that they won't fund it if we change it to an hour?
Um, I believe that they would fund it, first, again, first we have to wait to find out if it's awarded, and we won't find that out until probably June. Um, if it is awarded, there are obviously are going to need to, changes would need to be made if you make a change in the, in the schedule change for those elementary students. And that has to go back to D P I for approval.
Well, which elementary school, we talked, when you said.
Um, the question was about supply and then we have to serve supply Lincoln and Jesse May, yeah.
This is an argument here, and, um, what's important about the three to six, um, in what, what reality of after-school? Um, is the six o'clock number important to parents or?
Well, for a couple of reasons, um, that, again, that particular grant, you have to serve those students twelve, a minimum of twelve hours a week. And we know that the students of supply, really in order for them to be involved in an after-school program, we need to provide transportation for those students to get home. And in, um, in the case of this particular grant, it does provide transportation home. Um, so it is, I mean, something that is, um, the six o'clock hour, the three to six just provides that number of minimal hours that is necessary according to the grant.
And that's included with the transportation time?
I'm sorry.
Is that included with the transportation?
Uh, no, they would be legal with school building assets, yeah.
Yeah, could've just had thirty minutes and then four hours, two and a half hours per day.
We would, we would have to look at that as the possibility of an before-school program. And again, you know, it would mean tweaking the grants, the schedule, the budget. And, um, I think where we would fall short with that is in the transportation budget. Um, there would need to be, um, probably additional dollars because we would have to add Friday, we were going to be going four days, now we would need to go five days, which adds some, um, cost of course to transportation. So, logistically, it's simple, but, um, it's not impossible.
Is this a one-year grant?
It's a three-year grant.
Three-year. Mr. Chairman, I'd like without the period to give you the times that should we start elementary, for a full beat of start time, what kind of, um, can you say start times in June?
About, the beginning of time is, uh, eight fifty, for a minute.
And that was, I'm sorry.
If we, uh, if they were to get it first, they would begin at.
If they would begin, they would begin at seven.
Four o'clock, seven o'clock.
Okay, seven, four o'clock. Secondary would begin at seven thirty-five, and what time would our, our secondary start?
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty?
Four o'clock.
And if we were to reverse that, what time would the same time?
Due to the size of Runway County, the transportation folks get fifty-five minutes turnaround. So it's about an hour, far.
So are any of the, uh, elementary schools that do not have this program?
This particular program really only will serve supply Lincoln and Jesse May in a row. It's a free after-school program for eighty students at each of those three schools. Uh, we do have an after-school program, a fee-based after-school program, it's six elementary school right now, supply is not one of them.
But there is that option for parents. And you said something too interesting, maybe a four, and they have to go to a four school?
Uh.
To get driver.
That would be one of the considerations is possibly the four school program, uh.
You do that in any of the other?
We are not, no, we have tried before and, um, we have tried when we opened Town Creek and, uh, there was not enough need to really go forward with the four school program.
Have we ever thought about doing a running after-school program in the house? Do we have a principal?
To serve us well, too.
The students with the greatest need are usually the ones that are left out of the transfer station.
Nothing has changed. If we were to start the high schools later, it would be the same predicament that we were in the fifth place the last time, nothing that would have changed for that, right? That's very good.
Well, if the high schools go later on this proposed schedule there, the special time would be fifteen minutes later than the high schools in New Hanover County. So we try to line it up to minimize, um, the, the athletic schedule difference.
If last year, the turnaround time is sixty-five, this year it's fifty-five, so you squeezed it down a little bit, is that correct?
Uh, actually, we added five minutes. We tried to do it in fifty minutes last year, and if you'll recall, we had some elementary schools letting out a few minutes early, it was a little too tight. So this year, we, I only said five minutes, uh, so that it doesn't squeeze everybody at the first location.
Ma'am, Miss Cook, Miss Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, um.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't know that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh. I, I, I want to go back those, I believe. Concerned if we have a space lines, uh, well, with the school, with the high, uh, high schools, middle schools, of course, and sports and after-school jobs. In my, uh, while I talk with people, uh, during these times we've been doing it, a lot of the sports, uh, the coaches started having their practices that first hour in the morning trying to accommodate that. And I know that, uh, the, uh, children, I don't care which way we do this, it's good and it's making so much. Uh, but I have two teenage benchers working and, and their, their employers, if they get out fifteen minutes later, they just add fifteen minutes to the schedule. Even, and that doesn't solve it, I know that. But the reason that I still think that the, the biggest reason that I still think that if, um, six through twelve should go later is all the information that we've had presented to the, the, um, studies that have been made. That tell us that teens struggle with, um, extreme fatigue. Uh, yes, teens should go get a nine, ten apartment. Uh, I'd like to get around a thousand parents to dash come in, they might get two men by that. And so when they go in the morning, they're sluggish and sleepy, usually during the first period. What worries me still are those teenagers who drive cars early in the morning and all that traffic and are sluggish and sleepy. And I think that's, that just struck me more than anything else. On the other hand, with the elementary children, we were, uh, we had, I think one of the newspapers had cartoons, children outside on the bed, there was a lady going in the morning. That's when daylight savings times, uh, time, either came or what. We can't help it when the government changes the hour or two, you know, it's good, hurts somebody. But I'm thinking about, in elementary school, most of the young people, married people now, vote out the part of the work, husbands and wives. There might be some that, that people around all, they have a, uh, have a look at. Um, the old child's going to be on anyway that morning. And so what I'm thinking of is about doing, having a work at eight o'clock, which most, most people have to do it, and their child then goes to get to school until nine o'clock. That bothers me too. Uh, so those are the reasons I just thought back and forth and back and forth. I voted the last time was, um, six, I mean, eight to be, uh, or nine, six to be, what way to go later, and I still think it's the best idea.
Ma'am, Mr. Thorson?
Mr. Chairman, I, Dr. Bruden, it's fast, and regardless of what decision we make, it's not going to affect some parents, it's going to be anything, but we have to, we have to make a decision tonight. And I'm, uh, for, for motion for.
I'm asking, Mr. Taylor, what's the early, what's our earliest bus ride by now for an elementary child, like today?
Yeah.
And we have one getting under less than six thirty. That's the earliest right now? Yes, sir. Yeah, they go next year for. Going to a stagger bell schedule will decrease the amount of hours that a student is on in school, so the average ride time will be shorter, no matter, no matter what year. Was that an elementary child that was struck last week, their bus stop? Yes, it was. They're unhealed. Uh, it was their fault, this child. Yes, sir, it was. Unfortunately, but he, he's okay, thank goodness. And that happened after that night, right? It was, it was, it's actually seven oh one, at the time, at the bus stop. Mr. Thorson, sorry, do you want?
Mr. Chairman, again, this is a difficult decision the board has to make and, and, uh, I think the board knows how it felt after stagger times, regardless, the motion has to be made. And I'll make the motion that we start secondary schools first.
Aye, Mr. Thompson, first.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion, Mr. Thorson, the secondary first and second.
Response is second.
Response is second, okay, discussion.
Uh, well, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Is it, is it primarily the concern about after-school extraterrestrial activities, murder, those kinds of things?
That, that is some of the concerns that Miss Thompson alluded to, yes.
Yeah. Well. The sleep studies, I'm sure, are important, but I'm, I'm more taken by Miss Thompson's observation that, uh, the fewer teenage drivers on the road during rush hour is bound to be safer. But there's no statistical information to tell you what we're, is that true?
There probably is somewhere in Raleigh, but I can tell you this year that most of our morning accidents are not involving kids. Um, we've had some pretty serious ones here recently, and they were all adult age. Not saying that it doesn't happen, I think at one particular intersection down here, some point where there's quite a few where, I mean, most times it's an adult, hit the kid or kid runs. But, you know, um, really, I don't see a lot of kids that come in the morning, and I'm not saying that to sway you either way, but just from my personal observation, I would say.
Well, and truly, it's in fact, it makes sense. One of the things that convinced me that the multi-tiered, uh, scheduling was a, a good thing to do overall, other than saving time and money, was simply having fewer buses on the highway at any given time has to be safer than children buying buses.
No doubt, the accident last week, um, the bus that made a stop, left the stop, child darted out behind. After the bus that left, it was struck by a vehicle. The sibling of the child got hit on the bus and the other sibling took off the road, which was a younger sibling.
Another question, Dr. Bruden. Tell me when the, if we start at secondary first, when, when does the teachers get out? Staff, when would they be able to leave at elementary?
At elementary? Well, the secondary starts first, they would go in at seven forty-five.
Secondary goes at seven forty-five?
Elementary at eight forty-five, so three forty in the afternoon, about four o'clock.
So elementary would leave at around four o'clock. What time do they leave now?
Around three.
We're talking about teachers now.
Our teachers stay, what time is it?
Around, they, they can leave at three fifteen, their schedule runs until three fifteen.
As they come in, uh, by.
Seven forty to five.
About four to five. Whereas the secondary would leave early. Yes, same.
Yes, sir. Um, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Do you do, you run after-school care?
I'm sorry.
No, this, I'm sorry, this, do you, do you do after-school care at your school, is there any kind of after-school?
Uh, we have C I S after-school care at Union, I mean, our children pay.
Right.
Uh, but we have C I S after-school care at our school.
Well, if, I mean, first, if I could, if, if, if we voted for the, I guess, because that's what this is, are, is if we voted for the kindergarten through different to go later. How hard is it going to be for C I S to turn all this funding around, I'm not talking about the grant now, but if they have, if they were going to do it in the morning instead of afternoon?
We're talking about the paying problem, where the parents pay.
The paying problem.
Where the parents pay.
So we need you anyway.
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, come on, why?
I can't see you from the back, so I can't tell if you're looking at it.
There's some, there's some questions on the last one. Um. There will be some, uh, it will take some time to find a way to make after-school work. And the reasons for that is the cost, the way that we have the pricing structure right now. Uh, if we go to four o'clock, if school goes till four o'clock, uh, our after-school goes until six. So that tells us that we would have after-school for two hours. Um, some parents are not, of course, going to want to pay for an after-school program for two hours because they may look at that like a child can get on the bus, be on the bus for forty-five minutes to an hour, and then the parent possibly will arrive home at five o'clock. So, um, there's going to be some situations where children, I believe, are going to go home to an empty home, where the parents will arrive shortly thereafter. Um. If we try to create an before-school program and an after-school program, um, trying to find the right pricing, pricing structure because there's going to be parents that are only going to possibly want the after-school part or might only want the morning part. So there's lots of little logistics that would have to be worked out and, you know, it's one of those things that we just would have to wait and see.
So you're telling, you're saying that they would have, instead of just having in the, in the morning or just having at noon, they're going to have a bedtime?
Um, if, well, if the schools are looking, if we're looking at starting the elementary later in the morning, parents, some parents start their jobs earlier. They're going to need some way to get somebody to take care of those children in the morning.
Yeah.
So what we would consider looking at is if we could provide some, or, I'm sorry, a, a morning, um, service, a really morning service for those parents.
So would you still have an after, after?
And we would look at still having an after-school program. Um, again, it's not going to be an easy fix and there's going to be some things that are going to have to be worked out. I think that we will, um, not be able to make everyone happy, you know, there's going to be.
Well, for the thing that I'm using, if you're rehearsed that if you get the middle school students and our high school students, they're going to go home and they're going to be, you know, there by themselves and they won't be out maybe doing stuff that they shouldn't be doing. So regardless of what we do, we have to make the decision tonight, so my motion's there.
What we found on the last, if I may say, um, when we went to a staggered schedule all the last time, uh, we received quite a few calls from parents that were really in need for their, um, elementary child to be cared for. Um, but it worked, it worked out, uh, it worked out well.
Why is the elementary going first or?
Going first, yes.
How much is it per week?
Fifty-five dollars.
Fifty-five dollars.
What's the earliest, Dr. Prudential and Kathy and Vicki, I think she'll probably tell us, what's the earliest we open our doors? How many minutes prior to school start?
Half an hour, thirty minutes before school starts.
So eight, twenty, if they went second, they would come back.
And that gives us time to melt for breakfast.
Seems like that would be something we could, to...
Always more of that kind of breakfast for those students that choose to have.
Any more discussion?
I just want to say that, I know we're talking about after child, after-school care for small children, the time first, the sports, the AP classes that were having to be switched around, they're typically there in the afternoon and I don't know, there's still an issue that they need in the afternoon or this evening. And some of these kids in high schools who need sleep, they're not getting home until midnight or one o'clock in the mornings with after-school games that were away, that were in another county, that were coming back, and still they got homework after they get home. So they're never going to get any sleep, regardless. So, you know, I think there's so many issues, but the ones that I heard more loudly, if you will, were the ones from the high school students and the jobs and the things like that. And if they're going to be home first, then, you know, neighborhoods and local community people can maybe pull together like it's supposed to and help those kids that are coming home later, you know, for parents to get there. There's all, there are other options, you know, that, you know, could work out. But that was just a strong, that was a stronger voice that I had in hearing was the problems of the high school and the high school, you know, special schools and things like that going later.
When the, when the survey was done with the secondary schools, what was the result of the staff?
The staff, in both cases, the staff response was very similar to the parent's response. Elementary staff on elementary schools opened five out of one percent, similar to the teachers, to the parents. And at the secondary level, the secondary staff, there is a parental response, strong favor in them going first.
Second, secondary doesn't matter.
The teachers, the staff that felt elementary and secondary reflected very closely the parent need. Fifty-three point three. Just one percent of all.
Staff is obligated to, relax.
Central office.
I lost. He's having to do the same with the secondary.
Any more discussion? Have a motion in the second. All in favor of Mr. Thorson's motion, which was?
Secondary school start first.
Which is an elementary school start first, signify by staying high. All vote?
Yeah.
And motion passes three to.
Discussion announced by separate committee and board members. School visits by board members, May fourteenth. Welcome of the West Brom bookers, Charlotte, Jesse May and Union. May committee meeting, May twenty-first, operations at nine, curriculum at eleven, eight and on top of noon. Streets, policy at two, UU resources three, punished four.
You know, would we change it all around last?
As the board's flagrant.
Mr. Chairman.
At some point, we are going to try to advance the facilities task force and facilities update. Have we scheduled anything in the way of a liaison committee meeting, just for information with commissioners and perhaps even a workshop for the board because we're dealing with fairly substantial and complex issues?
Mr. Thompson, our board has a work session on the fifteenth of May from nine to twelve. And I think that's when we bring our ideas together and kind of see our way clear going forward. And at that time, we were going to then discuss, get together with commissioners and bring them into the conversation.
This is all in the way.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like very much to make sure that we have full board participation for the workshop. If at all possible, I urge everyone to...
You know, I've actually officially talked with Chairman Norris, kind of, where we're at, already had some conversations. This is only his, right?
Four, five.
The best from the fourteenth, we have school visits to the West End and the work session is on the fifteenth.
If I did that all day on keys, now I'm not that scared of when it's going to come back.
Do you have a call of when the facilities task force is scheduled to meet?
That's what I thought it expressed to be, to expect that they can do that as soon as possible.
I think we're going to schedule that to be soon after the work session on the fifteenth, but we haven't picked a date yet.
And also, the PAC, May twenty-first, six thirty PM, Mr. Thompson is our host at Layla Middle.
I don't know if we can talk this under a little bit of a cookie. I'm a bit used to having this spread.
One leaves, Layla's hungry.
Okay, I have much good questions.
May I make one other announcement, please, Mr. Chairman? The Runwood County Inter-Cultural Festival is always a very fun and colorful event. This coming year will be Saturday, September the seventh, and from ten to four on the campus of Runwood Community College. It's a wonderful event, collaboration between Runwood Community College, the Arts Council, Chamber of Commerce, State Port Pilot, North Runwood Chamber and The Beacon all sponsor that wonderful event. And of course, then Saturday, the school system's participation is all voluntary, but we do have school groups participating each year. It's a wonderful family event. Mary Lou Wong Chong is the chair of the committee and she was here tonight in support of Mike and asked if I would put in good words for the intercultural festival.
Now, do you have much questions? All there. Let's talk about Rogers.